I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen together on Monday, May 8th, 2017, at 6:30 PM. If we could rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if anybody's recording tonight, if you'd kindly let us know. I'm listening to the chairman's comments.
Yes, a couple of things. The election results, I'm sure, are well-known for Board of Selectmen by a narrow margin. Charles Hustleby will be joining the board. School Committee, Ms. Corposaro, Mr. Murphy were re-elected, also Ms. Nussman. Board of Health, it was Mr. Wilson and Brian Crotto who were elected, and Jaclyn Flynn to the Winchun and Housing. And the question one did pass, that was on the charter and bylaw changes. On another note, a couple of weekends ago, I went out to DeeDee's Treasures on 140 for their grand opening. And I confess, I've never been in there and didn't know what to expect, but it was a really, really fun time. She has forty or so vendors who are brought in, have brought in their handcrafted items, and she's selling them there, and everything from doll clothes to fabric to jewelry. And Senator Goby, Representative Zlatnik were there, so we wished them out. It was actually their one-year anniversary, if I recall. So it was great to have a grand opening for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saganowitz?
Just a reminder to those who'd like to meet Senator Ann Goby, State Rep. John Zlatnik, and the Board of Selectmen, and other town officials. The Winchun School will be hosting a meet-and-greet along with the Greater Gardner Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday, May 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00 in the new admissions welcome center. They request that you register in advance and contact the Greater Gardner Chamber of Commerce to register. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say thank you to all the people that showed up at Smith Country Cheese yesterday. They had a huge turnout yesterday for their grand opening. There was Wachusett was there, Gardner Ale House was there, the gourmet sandwich guy was there, there was a cotton candy popcorn guy there, there was a musician playing, there was a big crowd that turned out that came out and met and greeted them, and there was cows, plenty of cows to see. It turned out to be a beautiful day, and I'd just like to say thank you and welcome to the new owners. They got a good kickstart yesterday, so we're ready for them.
Thank you. And I would like to announce the special and annual town meeting will be held next Monday, May 15th, 2017, at 7:00 PM at Murdoch Middle High School. Are there any public comments this evening? No? We have no public hearings this evening. Under appointments and resignations, I'd like to announce the Montezet Regional Vocational School District Appointment Notice. Letters of interest are being accepted for the appointment of the town's representative to the regional district school committee. It is a four-year term, and it is appointed jointly by members of the Board of Selectmen, the town moderator, and the local school committee. Please submit your letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen's office at 109 Front Street by June 1st, 2017, if you are interested in serving at that position. Next is permits, licenses, and applications for the boot drive for the Winchun and Historical and Cultural Center.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you tell us a little bit about your, the Winchun and Historical Society as well as your boot drive?
Yes, well, this particular boot drive, we do every year, every May, and everything we collect benefits the Murdoch Scholarship Fund, which we do each year. And when I first took over, we would only give $500 for a scholarship, and then we started doing the boot drives, and not only do we give the $500, we, you know, give whatever we collect on the boot drive that day. So it's a worthy cause, so instead of giving something to one person, we're able to spread it out to three people at least. So we found it's worth it, we have a lot of fun, we do take safety into, highly into consideration, so. And I know that they are annoying, and, but it's just, it is a quick, you know, easy way to get some money in one day without, you know, doing a whole lot of effort, so I would just continue to do it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
John, I note that Police Commissioner made a note about the hours, suggested only doing it three hours. You had requested five.
Yeah, and generally they'll do. I put it down, I think I always wrote down like eight to two or nine to two.
Nine to two is what was on the application.
Generally, by noon, we're fizzled out, usually. But I put that as a buffer, just in case, you know, sometimes we start later, and so I just, you know, but generally, it never, I think it never really goes more than three hours.
Okay. I think, I would, I would like to say that I hate boot drives. That being said, I do find, usually, the Historical Society is very creative as far as finding other outlets and ways to raise money, which I appreciate, because, you know, blocking off Route 12 is just annoying, especially on Saturdays, when people are going to the transfer station.
With coffee.
With coffee, yeah.
Well, maybe in the future, you know, they may be go to the wayside as well, but it's just been a busy year, so it's kind of like, you kind of have to put things on autopilot and things we know that work, but I totally get it, I mean, we do get creative, and it's fun.
It's fun?
Yeah, they are fun, actually, you know, for the, for the three hours we're out there, you know, because you see everybody in town, whether they're getting, they're snarling at you, or, or giving you money. It is fun, and especially if the weather's nice, so.
Yeah. Do some people snarl?
No, it's more just driving like that, and not looking. I really, anybody, no mean people, but yeah, I do totally get it, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move for the applicant.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair will vote aye.
Thank you.
It hurt me.
Thank you, Don.
Next, if we could have the Ingleside Utilization Committee come forward.
Let's see, do we have to move to come back from recess?
If you wanted a recess, probably would.
I move that we reassemble from recess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're back from recess.
Okay. Good. So it's new and exciting.
Say that again?
What's new and exciting?
Ah, we've got all kinds of things exciting for you tonight. You had asked us, well, we had asked for this meeting, and we wanted to bring a status update of where we are regarding the project, and we also kind of wanted to talk about plans for the upcoming year, and then finish off with a quick discussion about Fall Fest, I believe. Some of the things that we've looked at as a committee, the directives that we had received at the beginning, when we all came together, was to establish committee, mission, and charter, to establish meeting schedule, review the Ingleside master plan, determine method to include community support, and determine the phases of development now. So the committee has established, we're looking for new members, we're constant, we're currently looking for a few new members, we're going about doing some recruiting as well. We've established a meeting schedule, we're meeting every two weeks, one on Tuesday night, one on Monday night. We've all got copies of the master side, the master plan for the Ingleside, and we've reviewed those, we've looked over those. We're currently working on some methods to begin building community support, and the phases of development are already outlined in the master plan, however, they're adaptable and movable according to what we have for community support. Some of the projects that we've looked at, one of the things we'd like to do is start relatively quickly, we'd like to erect a sign, future home of, and come up with a name for the park. We've invited several people out to our meetings. Glenn Eaton from the MRPC is coming on either the 22nd or 23rd, we've voted to make our meeting, whichever meeting day he can make, we'll meet with him, to talk about meeting, to talk with us about financing and grants, and help us to determine where we sort of stand, where we should really put our influence, where we should really begin to focus our attention as far as fundraising and raising money for the property. We've begun looking at the entryway a few weeks ago, several of the committee went up to look over the property, walk the property, and to look at the entryway, which needs to be addressed, and probably is one of the first things that we need to begin looking at and raising money for, to figure out how we're going to either widen that entrance, possibly create a second, a second egress from the property or into the property. We've looked at several possibilities in that. We looked at clearing an area that would be most easily used and can be cleared, we hope that this is one of the first projects that we can sort of use volunteer labor on, that we would, so we're looking for an area on the property where we can, which is easily cleared, probably most easily cleared, maybe even most easily used by the public, to clear that and to bring in volunteer labor, whether it's scouts, whether it's church folk, whether it's other committees in town that want to help, and begin to clear away a piece of the property that we can begin to use for different events within the community. Guy Coppesero has opened a conversation with Representative Zlatnik on the dam, and he also spoke with Amanda Jenkins from the Winchun and School, who has already volunteered, she is the service learning coordinator for Winchun and School, and she's volunteered a group of her students to help us with brush cleaning, or maybe setting up a river classroom in the fall, or even a teaching garden in the spring. So those are some of the things we've looked at, we invite, we've had Algalon out to one of our meetings, we are inviting Chief Walsh in June, and we're looking at the possibility of doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony, we'd like to speak with you about that at some point this summer. Anything else? Am I forgetting anything?
The picnic?
The picnic, which is the ribbon, the ribbon cutting, and maybe it would be like a community picnic, where we invite everybody out for the day, a day on the lawn, we'd probably have some music, we're looking at connecting with some bands that we could have come and play, and at the same time, we do a ribbon-cutting ceremony, probably have a cake or something for the community, and everyone would come and have a picnic there on the lawn. Any other thoughts?
There's a lot of details under it, but...
Oh, yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's a, that's a really brief overview, and that's, that's really our plan, sort of our initial plans for the coming year. What, one of the questions that we would like to, that we had for you, this is a big project, this is a really big project, and there are a lot of things, there are a lot of aspects and elements to it. We've got our initial charge, what would you like to know? What would you like, what would you, where would you like us to go? Where would you like us to data mine?
Well, to add on to that, our intention and our hope is to meet periodically with you, to give you updates on this, because we're collecting information and going to be making recommendations, but we have to bring those to you, for you to approve them, and so, you know.
Our job is to bring recommendations to you, so that you can approve them, and our intent is to meet periodically. We'll establish a schedule where we'll come before you, and give you updates on, you know, what, what we've learned, or what we're looking at, and what seems to be some of the most feasible things to move forward with first, especially to make the place accessible and to begin to get people engaged at Ingleside in making it their place, you know, a resource for the town, and the funding that will have to be re-raised to get some of the bigger projects done.
Right. I know, I was wondering, I was just curious if, it seems to me years ago that the Chili Festival used to be held on that property, and if there was ever, you know, if the Quanys, if anybody had reached out to them and seen if there was interest of bringing that back at some point, you know, I would like to see that piece of property highlighted as, as kind of the town's party place, for lack of a better term.
They have that at the Legion, right?
They do, yeah.
I think one of the reasons that we had talked about doing a community picnic at some point, as well as a ribbon-cutting and putting the sign up, was, it was our understanding, and Keith, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the Fall Festival, and we're still in a quandary as to who's going to be in charge of that, since it's getting a little bit late, is going to be downtown this year, and we wanted to make sure that there was going to be something up at Ingleside this year at some point, so that it doesn't become a case of out of sight, out of mind. We want to, we don't want people to forget that that resource is there, and that it's being, for lack of a better word, developed into a community resource. So that, and again, that's, that's, to your point, that's one of the reasons that we want to make sure that there's at least an event or two there this year.
Absolutely. Right, and I do realize that the egress, coming in and coming out, it's a little tricky right now for any kind of a thing, unless there's help.
Madam Chair, if I could try to address that, so I've had a couple of conversations with the chair, Dave Romanowski, who couldn't be here this evening. I had suggested to the, to the committee, if they wouldn't be offended at potentially moving the Fall Festival downtown, so we can have some of our merchants and vendors that own businesses in town, be able to highlight what they, you know, what, what goods and services they can provide to the community that where people may not know, and we've got people coming from outside of the community at that event as well. The Fall Festival the last couple of years has been held at Ingleside to try to highlight the fact that we're looking at trying to acquire Ingleside, we've done that. So does it make sense to, to hold it downtown and make it more of a town-wide event rather than a highlight of a piece of property? My conversations with Mr. Romanowski was that I think we hold, we hold the Fall Festival this fall at Ingleside again, because there was a question over, over who was going to be responsible for overseeing the, the Fall Festival, if it was going to be held in the downtown area on Central Street. And I thought we needed a little bit more time as a community to plan for that, if it's going to be on Central Street, and get some buy-in from the vendors and the property owners that live, that own property on Central Street. So at this point, I think it's going to remain at Ingleside, at least for 2017, and we'll have ongoing discussions moving forward with, with this group and other, other individuals to see if it makes any sense to move that to the Central Street area in the future. So that's, so that's my thought of where things are going to end up in 2017. I did happen to see one of the board members today from Kiwanis, who was in today, gathering information and submitting information for the Chili Cook-Off, suggested that they consider using the Ingleside property again. I think they're interested in that, was the impression I received. I don't think it's going to happen this year, because I think it's too far down the road, but we did offer to allow them to use the Ingleside property in the future, and I think they're going, he's going to bring that up to the, the board at the Kiwanis Club and see if it makes sense to relocate that from the current location to VFW, and they'll, I'm sorry, American Legion, I apologize. They'll talk about that themselves and see if it makes sense to do that in the future or not, but it has been offered.
Thank you.
As far as the Fall Fest, we are probably two to three months behind planning schedule at this point for a Fall Fest. I would say, and, and we're down several committee members who actually did quite a large portion of the planning. So that said, just from a logistical standpoint, planning the Fall Fest at Ingleside this year would probably be a very difficult thing. I would say that we would probably want to look more into doing a ribbon-cutting, and even if we wanted to move that towards the fall. So this is something that we had brought up back in, in our committee back in February with David, and so at this point, Fall Fest would, would probably be a much different animal than it's been, just, just from a standing logistical and raising money standpoint. So I leave that in.
Well, I've also had a con, at Dave's request, I've had a conversation with Tracy Murphy, because what we were sort of going, operating under was with the sense that the Fall Festival would be moved to downtown, and Keith is exactly right, it was, the Fall Festival was originally run by the 250th Anniversary Celebration Committee to, as a fundraiser, and then when that happened, we took it on, the Winchun and Enhancement Committee took it on, so that people would actually learn what Ingleside was, and have a chance, the opportunity to get there, and to his point, it's been established. And then I think, obviously, there's been some, you know, back and forth and not, not clear on, well, where's this going to be? Because the Toy Town Partnership Winchun and Enhancement Committee doesn't see it under their purview anymore, because we have an Ingleside Utilization Committee. But our job isn't to put on Fall Festivals, ours is to develop, now really focus on the development of Ingleside. So in Dave, when Dave was talking about where's it going to be and how's it going to go, you know, we talked about, is it possible to try to find committee or committees that are already sort of focused on the revitalization of our downtown, that that's part of what they're trying to do. So I know I had in the back of my head the Community and Economic Development Steering Committee, not that they would do all the work, but someone who would help steer it. But when I went to speak to Tracy about it, and this was just last week, so there hasn't been much developed, she was actually thrilled to hear about this possibility, because what she began to think about, and she knew it would be hard for this group on their own, but to start, there, I guess at the, the meet-and-greet that's going to happen at the Winchun and School, there's going to be a group of business people from town there who want to try again to launch a Winchun and Business Association, and Tracy thought that that might be a very interesting, the Fall Festival in the downtown might be a very interesting thing for them to take on, but she acknowledged that they, at this point, wouldn't be able to do it on their own. So I think there's, we've got to figure out pretty fast who's going to be, who could come together, because I think that's what it's going to be, not one committee, one small group of people, but who, who could pull this off? We can get Linda's files and...
Yeah, I've got a blueprint anyway, so.
We, we know a lot.
Right.
But it's just, but we know it's, it takes a lot to put it on, and that's why maybe rethinking it and coming up with something that's a little more, maybe more linked to the downtown, I don't know, but that's where we seem to be right now.
Thank you. Mr. Mickey?
Thanks, so, so just hearing this, I guess I'd ask the board to allow me, the town, to take this over and, and try to put together some people that we need to put together, and, and look to have a Fall Festival in the fall, obviously, in, on Central Street. And we'll take over trying to find volunteers and businesses and try to pull us together, if the board would allow us to, that opportunity.
I think it sounds great. I love the Fall Festival, and I've been going, and, and I really, really enjoyed it. Every time that I've gone, I've gone with Austin, and it's always a whole lot of fun, and I just think the Ingleside property itself is so beautiful, that we should be showcasing that. But that being said, knowing that it's still under development, it's still under planning, I, I feel like the downtown area might be a great place to do it on a Saturday, and I think the one thing I was thinking when we, I was at the Fall Festival last year is, you know, the town could certainly do more, and we should showcase what we do as well. Different groups and different boards could have booths and promote what they do, or the DPW with its trucks that it always brings to the Chili Festival and...
Really good idea, because our vendors at the Fall Festival have always been community groups that set up their tables. And, oh, one other thing that I forgot to say from Dave, is that the Clark Memorial doesn't want to leave this, but has expressed an interest in being involved in having their, their land be used and things like that.
Oh, it's wonderful.
So they're on board.
So sure, Mr. Iggy, if you want to have fun with that, you go right ahead.
Absolutely, love to.
I just, you know, you, they've kind of established, we have a Fall Festival, and now I like it.
Madam Chair?
Hello, excuse me. To get back to the Ingleside, we have to fix that barn.
I'm sorry, what?
The barn.
The barn, yeah.
You know, the sofas are gone, we've got to clear the brushroom around, we have to have the foundation looked at, and right now, we went to look at it, Greg and I, and it's locked. I wondered if we could get the key, because they got all that, they got an old fire engine in there and some dive stuff, and, so if we were going to look at it to fix it, we'd have to get in there.
So be happy to, I wasn't aware you were trying to get in, we'd be happy to give you the key or bring you up there. One of the things I was going to point out at some point was the focus of this group is the fundraise. It wasn't supposed to be a cost to the town, so if the barn needs to be repaired, we certainly want to make sure that happens, but I think your focus, your primary focus should be fundraising. You've got money from Robinson Broadhurst, six thousand or so dollars, if you need that to bring somebody in to help you fundraise. I think, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not speaking out of turn, your primary focus is the fundraise.
Well, see, we didn't know, I didn't know that when I got on the committee. We looked at, that's why we got Glenn Eaton coming for the grants, and we were wondering what happened with the Converse money, if the Ingleside could get some of that.
We'll put in an application for a boot drive.
No.
I heard it's quick money, pretty easy. If you can get it past, if you can get it past the board chair, who might throw your coffee at you as you're standing outside trying to collect. The Converse Fund is something that is coming due in 2017, there seems to, there, I had the, I had the honor, I guess, and the pleasure of meeting with a couple of the heirs of the Converse Fund about a month ago, and their opinion of how that money can be spent and how much money can be spent potentially differs from the trust document itself, that was written a hundred years ago, and the main, the main difference is, in my mind, the trust document talks about spending the interest on monies that were earned, where the, the heirs feel as though everything other than the $50,000 seed money for another hundred year fund can be expended. So I've asked our attorneys to, to get a, a legal opinion on whether we've got to go to court to ask for opinion, or they can, they feel comfortable, we've got, the, the heirs have provided us a letter outlining their opinion and why, and what they think the intent was. And once that gets resolved, there are a number of organizations that are, are outlined specifically in that trust document, churches, parks, the town, for funding cemeteries. There'll be a balance of some amount of money, and I think I've mentioned to the board, my town manager, my past town manager reports, that I think we have, we put together an application with a period of time that people can apply that meet the criteria to receive some of those funds, and the board ultimately will have to make a decision on who and how much money each of those organizations who applied would receive. And that's certainly funds, that's not fundraising, that's a gift. And I think fundraising's been discussed since I've been here, with how this, how this property's going to be sustained, if and when it was ever obtained by, by the town from the Winchun and School. So I'm a little surprised that you haven't heard about fundraising before I've mentioned it tonight, but that's your, that's, that's your charge. That, there is no real money in the 2018 operating budget for Ingleside, because it's supposed to be self-sustaining through grants or fundraising or what have you, so my two senses, where you should be focusing as much time as you can, how to find the money.
We need to know what we're finding it for.
You're trying to find money to develop, develop that property.
But when you write a grant, it has to be for a specific purpose.
Sure.
And that's the phase we're in right now.
And I think the grants that I'm, the grants that I'm aware of, and, they are going to be different grants for different purposes, so there may be grants available for playing fields, so you apply for a playing field grant, there may be... There may be grants available to preserve the buildings that are on that property. So you apply for those grants and you apply it to that purpose. You know, I think the walking trail, for example, from the downtown area out to, out to the Ingleside property, if that could be cleaned up and potentially used, it's a great opportunity for people to walk down from downtown up to the Ingleside property. Certainly the entrance, if you're going to start getting traffic in and out of there, it needs to be addressed, the site distance is a problem. And it needs to be...
Well, we had one, we had one thing, we wanted to get a forester to see if we could select, cut some of that land and use that money as a fundraiser. Because on the point out there, it's so overgrown that if the dam ever comes back up and the water comes in, if you could select, cut some of those big trees and make some money and have picnic tables out there and that, it'd be a beautiful spot. And then the entryway coming in from Elm Street, there's so much dead lumber, Greg and I walked it, I'm sure some of the other members did too. And to clear some of those big logs that have fallen, there's some hit by lightning and, you know, so that's what, if we could do some, can we do something like that? Ask for a forester, do we have to come back to you and if he gives us a, if he says, I can, I can cut so much over here, select, cut and give you $5,000 or $10,000, can we do that? Get it on board and come before you and have it approved?
My, again, my, my impression would be that if you would like to have a forester come in and outline a plan for the board to consider and bring that plan back to the board, then that's something I think that you would have to get approval for the board for. But you have to have approval for the, from the board to get a forester to go by and take a look. I don't think you do. Before you sign a contract, obviously the board needs to be aware of what the plans are, what the impact's going to be to the property and, and then they can make a decision on what you're proposing to do with the property. But I'm not really sure, and again, I don't get a vote here, but my impression would be that, you know, it's your property to, to make recommendations to the board on and if a forester makes sense, and I think it does, you know, go out and have that discussion and let them bring back their professional opinion on what can be done out there and move forward with bringing it forward to the board.
Well, I haven't looked at the, the town budget line item by line item. So I guess one of the questions that I'd have in terms of any fundraising that we do, whether it's grant writing or asking for money at the Fall Festival or whatever, is there, with the money that we raised, does that go into a line item for Ingleside specifically? Or does that go into a Parks and Recreation budget that's shared with other parks in the community? How, how will that work? How does that work?
We could establish a, an account specifically for the Ingleside property. So any funds that are generated through donations or grants or what have you would be earmarked specifically for that property.
Okay.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, Mike, you were going to say something?
Thank you. Just a couple of, you know, I mean, I'm reading some of the stuff you guys have already started to look into and it's, and it's great and, you know, we're trying to get up to speed and it does take a while. That's a big piece of property to utilize over the long term and, you know, the master Ingleside plan has a great vision for it, but, you know, it's very costly and how do we get from A to B? One of it was a public-private partnership we talked about, trying to find somebody to partner with to help do some financing and get some buildings or whatnot up. The other thing I was thinking of, just because we were talking about like the Fall Festival, is that piece of property, and it wouldn't probably be this year, but like next year, to get a carnival to come in? And a carnival? You know, the carnivals to come in and use that as a fundraising tool. A, you can show the property off. B, it's a perfect property to have that kind of event in and it will draw not only local people but people from outside to look at that property. And you might find some, some nice, you know, suggestions. I was, I was curious that we, where that does have that water opening is that we could find someone to lease, like a boat rental place there so you have use of the water. Again, that's a, that's a public-private partnership to get someone to maybe rent a space there to have during the season boating. So there's, there's, you know, a couple of ideas that you could throw out that are inexpensive and you can, you can look at. You know, that is a beautiful piece of property and does have that nice water view, let's take advantage of it. We do a terrible job in this town of using the equity we have and water view is beautiful and you've got the trails there. So if we could use that as a jumping off point, you might be able to draw people in there, at least for boating or school kids or, you know what I mean, groups to use that. So that's just my two cents, but, you know, I'm trying to help you jumpstart, you know, I want to see that project jumpstarted and get some funding in. Carnival would be a way to raise some money.
And I guess my only concern with that, Mike, and I don't know if you can answer this or whether Town Council would have to, to answer it, would be the issue of liability. What, you know, what, if an accident were to happen on a ride, would the town be liable? Would this committee, individual members be liable? How, how would that work? I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but I'd be a little nervous about that.
Sure. So my, we would work with the town's property liability insurance carrier to make sure we had the sufficient insurance in place from the, in this case, the carnival owner. Because it's on town properties, does the town have, face some potential liability? Sure. The ride, the carnival company's insurance would be primary, but they could, you know, anybody could if they were injured, you know, name the town as well. So there's, there's, you know, some type of risk there potentially, but I think most of it goes on to the carnival owner.
Again, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just, that was the first thing that popped into my head.
When I moved to town, 2002, they had a carnival up the high school. And that was the one and only time they had it. And I thought that was a great idea and...
For their Fall Festival? We used to do Fall Festival.
Yeah, so, you know, this is a good piece of property to use, I'm just, I'm just throwing something else for you.
Another question, we had mentioned the possibility of having a caretaker move into that building up there and could we have him lease it and rent it, you know, say, could you do that? Say have a, a young couple or something and they want a place for a year, lease them that property, that those, that house in the back and then they could watch it as well as have a good deal living there? Is it, is that a...
Sure, anything's possible.
Well, that was just...
So it's, it's, I mean, it'd be something to talk about, you know, you...
Right. When it's time to make a recommendation.
Yeah, and we've, one of the things I was going to bring up is we have, you know, the tenants of that property are leaving at the end of June. How are we going to address the security on that property? You know, a tenant is an option that certainly could be discussed, sure.
Yeah, I was just, we brought that up.
They would research leases. Other, other communities who have different, like especially historic properties and whatever, they, it's very common for them to do. So we would learn from others and try to put something together that made sense, that specified what should and shouldn't happen on the property kind of thing. So...
Mr. Brady, do you have something?
Yeah, you, earlier you referenced the master plan for Ingleside. Now, I remember during the promotional phase to try to get this owned by the town, there was a document put together and it was multiple page and it had all the funding sources and so, is that, is that the document you're referring to? Okay.
Yes.
All right. I have mine in my file, I'll pull it out. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing that I, I think we already sort of started talking about it, but I think maybe for the next time that we meet, having a fundraising or funding plan, because that was going to be the question I have, I had, was first, do any of you know what the full cost of the total project is? It's okay if you don't at the top of your head, but...
It's in that document.
I don't think anybody at this point has...
Estimate.
Yeah, there was estimates in the master plan, but if you could just, if you had the number, just for me to remember.
There were estimates in the master plan and there was, there was also a sense that they might not, they might be high. And that's why we had very much always, certainly as the Winchandon Enhancement Committee, had been looking for that combination of funding through grant writing and what can be done by people from the town. And that, and that's a big part of it. And it's, it all depends on, you know, a sense of maybe there's timing instead of urgency for certain things to happen, but also feasibility in that we're able to raise funds for it. And, you know, I, I don't think we're going to know a whole budget for the whole thing because I think we'll be able to do it in, in pieces and phases.
I think that was part of the plan anyways. They were separated into phases anyway, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the board would agree, maybe next time, having some sort of an action plan. Doesn't have to be in cement, but just something that, just so we could see sort of progress, especially from this committee. We know that you've been meeting and, you know, trying to really get started and I think we're all equally excited to see how this goes. And finally, I would also recommend to Keith, I know you said you want to take on this Fall, Fall Festival and the Ingleside Committee, reaching out to, you have a member on the Parks and Rec Committee and he's engaged and interested in planning events like these, Fall Festival and any other events. So I'm sure you already have reached out to him, but I'm sure he would be willing to help and the whole committee.
And we, we have a lot of information, Linda, Linda has it, because we, we were well organized as a committee, the Enhancement Committee, to put this on. So, you know, that, that information is available.
Yeah, the blueprint's already there, so it's not like you're inventing the wheel.
I think the opportunities are endless. You know, there's, there's so many ways that you could get this done and especially there's, I think there's people that just would like to see something like this happen and I wish I were one of them where I could just throw money at this maybe someday. But yeah, I think that, I'm looking forward to this.
I'm wondering, has anybody reached out to the school at the high school to see if maybe they had an environmental club or a community service?
That'll be half the project. And you could get their help as well.
See, right now, on the, on the Enhancement Committee, our Superintendent Schools and the head of the Murdock Academy are members of that. And some of us on this committee are still on that committee, so there's some cross-pollination going on that way.
We had another idea, like a Boy Scout Jamboree. There's plenty of room, a Girl Scout Jamboree.
Perfect, yes.
We've got a lot of things on, just kind of do a step out of town until we can...
Sure.
But if the Boy Scouts are listening, you know, they could have in all different communities, there's plenty of room up there to have the overnight jamboree and...
Brush glaring jamboree.
And badges and, you know...
The scouts have even talked when they came to the Fall Festival, because we've done surveys every year, so we know, we have a fair amount of information from people. I think I remember it was the scouts that were interested in like putting in environmental kiosks and things like that. So, you know...
Awesome.
Yeah, we just have to start making, getting the word out of what the opportunities are and who wants to raise their hand and see how to make it happen.
As far as the scouts go, I used to do the old Klondike Derby, which was you go out in the middle like, in the winter and set up all sorts of stations and that's a perfect area to have that. We mush, we mush sleds.
Absolutely.
I think that's a good plan. Absolutely.
Madam Chair? And just, you had asked someone, you know, what, what the board thought, you know, would be a way to go to get this started. Speaking for myself, I have no particular event or part of the whole process that I think you should focus on first. As you said, you've done the surveys, you've done this in the past, so you have a sense of what, you know, the community might want first. So I'm open to, to whatever you may bring back to, to the board. And that brings up my question is to, do we want to set a, a time for you to come back, like mid-June? Or, you know, we talked about getting regularly, you know, just touch base.
Well, I think we should meet with the Chair of the, that Monitues Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Because he can help us think through that and then go through our master plan again with the list of sources there.
Yeah.
And we'll have, we'll probably have a first cut there. And then I know as we talk to people, other things come up. I remember when we were networking with other town committees, spoke to the Board of Health and someone on the Board of Health who's working on a master's degree in public health or something, talked about a state program that could, you know, related to health.
Mm-hmm.
That would fund. So I think that, you know, it'll, it will evolve, it will develop. And, and I, to your point too, I think for us to look at the surveys of what people would like to see at Ingleside, what the responses were and to share that again with you and put it in the context of what we're following this.
Yeah, kind of tabulate the, yeah.
That barn also, like my wife had mentioned, it'd be a nice place for a wedding if you fixed a barn up nice.
Oh, my goodness, love that barn.
Or some of those painting things they're doing now, you know, you go and you pay $30 and you paint something.
Yeah.
And I know Historical Society's got things, but, you know, this, you could have a leather project, you know, anything you wanted to do. If you could get the barn fixed up, you could start with little things like that.
That's a great fundraiser as well, to have those painting parties.
Hello? Hello? Okay. Hey, Brian Dickens, Chair of the Parks Committee. Talking about the high school, the committee I'm in has two student rep spots, one of them which they're leaving for school in September, which is great, but not great. But we also have Michaela Benedictus on the Key Club and, which gets me to thinking that this is a community park, therefore has been molded, is being molded and will be molded by the, by the community. And that's my favorite part about this whole project. So, which brings me to thinking, having the Parks and Rec student reps, bringing some sort of student insight because they don't come to these meetings. And, you know, just because they're, just because they're not old enough to cast a vote, doesn't mean that they don't have pretty cool ideas. Or maybe they don't even know about it. But it's something that I could bring to the Parks Committee when we meet Wednesday, actually.
Great.
Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for meeting with us.
Of course.
I have other questions.
I would like to though, thank you all for your work. I know you've dedicated hours and hours to this project and we do appreciate it because we do want to see great things happen. And you can't do it without volunteers who are willing to help.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Yes.
Second of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Keith, real quickly, before we get off the topic, you're talking about bringing the Fall Festival into town to kind of make it, you know, a community-wide, the vendors and the businesses and stuff like that. I know last year, what was it, Small Business Saturday, when you had things here? Maybe, you know, if we can tie it into a Fall Festival, great. But maybe we can develop some other, come up with a name for just, to promote the businesses in Winchon. Not Small Business Saturday, but I don't know.
Right, Small Business Saturdays after Black Friday.
Yeah, but just, you know, The Merchants of Winchendon by Shakespeare or something like that, you know? I don't know.
I feel like we're, all of a sudden we're getting more crafty stores, which is great. And that, I mean, that's wonderful to promote in the fall.
Yeah.
Because everybody's feeling kind of crafty.
Even as a separate event.
Well, I, I think, Madam Chair, if I might, I think the, the idea of this Commerce Committee is exactly what you're talking about, of getting the people, the businesses downtown and in-town together to promote themselves. I think what you're saying is exactly what they're trying to do.
Yeah, we tried that a couple of times, we actually got as far as applying for the nonprofit status and getting bylaws written up and stuff like that. So there's a basis there, the WBA.
Tracy Murphy has, has worked at, trying to establish and have the businesses gain interest in wanting to get together, talk about what they can do for the community, come to the community as a group or the town as a group and explain some of the concerns, the issues they have, things we can do better, things how, things that we can help them with in some, in some way. So the Chambers, the Chamber and Gardner has taken a more active role and they'd like to see, you know, working with them to try to come up with some type of representation that the groups, the group of businesses in Winchon can have without becoming full members of the Gardner Chamber of Commerce. So we're hoping to have them have a bigger voice or larger voice down in Gardner at the Chamber of Commerce and utilize the resources the Chamber of Commerce has to benefit Winchandon. So Tracy continues to work with that, that's part of why she's been meeting with the Gardner Chamber of Commerce, is partly why we're having this meet and greet. Chamber of Commerce, is partly why we're having this meet and greet, and inviting businesses and whatnot to come in and meet with the board, and the Senator and State Representative next Tuesday night, so, you know, I think we're gaining some traction there, and having a business or a Fall Expo where we can highlight the businesses, they can open up their shops and whatnot, and have a lot of people downtown, similar to what happens, I think, probably with the summer solstice, just, I think will benefit the whole area.
Yeah.
All set and ready to move on to new businesses? First is, we have a request from Verizon for the easement to install electrical equipment at the former landfill. I'd be happy to. Do we have anyone from Verizon?
I don't think we do.
No?
So Verizon, Verizon, as everybody is aware, is working on with National Grid to get the power that's going to be generated from the landfill project out to the grid. So Verizon would own these, would own these six poles that would run alongside Trotting Park Road, Trotting Park Road, which is basically at the transfer station. There's a map in your packet, it's highlighted yellow. Verizon's proposing to install six poles on Trotting Park Road that would connect to the one pole that's already existing on River Street. Those poles may not all be installed at the very, at the exact same time, they'll be installed sporadically potentially, but these are to get three-phase power out of the solar array into their, into their grid, so they, they're asking for an easement to allow those six poles to be constructed, that will do no, there's no impact to the town property or the former landfill. This is, this is a way for them to, as I mentioned, to get that electricity out of the solar array and into their international grids' electrical infrastructure.
Why is it Verizon?
Verizon owns most of the poles in town, so it's Verizon and National Grid would have an agreement to place the electrical lines on the Verizon poles. It does seem strange.
Yeah.
But...
This is the final phase, correct?
This is the last thing that they need to get the power out to, out to the road, into the grid.
Into the grid, yeah.
So how many poles will they put up, and how fast can they get it generated?
Well, they're going to put up a total of six poles. They'll do that this spring. The Onyx Energy has been working with them to try to get this power up and running sometime in the first quarter of 2007, and, I'm sorry, the first quarter, first, our first quarter of our fiscal year in 2018. So, you know, hopefully six months from now or less, power will be generated from that solar array into the, into National Grid's...
System.
System, thank you.
Hallelujah. Are you kidding me?
Yeah, again, Onyx has been, and I don't have the history that this board has and the community has with the frustration over the solar array. Onyx has been, you know, just, they've done everything they said they were going to do, and it's been, has really worked with us very well, so it's been a nice partnership.
Now, they're done, right, pretty much?
Solar array's basically done. There's some electrical work that needs to occur out there, but the construction of the panels themselves are basically completed.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the board grants Verizon the easement rights for the six poles, starting with P-91-1 to P-91-6. Five, I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, five, you know, six poles, along Trotton Park Road.
I didn't know that had a name.
Neither did I.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
And actually, I think Trotting Park Road, if you have, years ago, obviously, it came out on Roston Road North, just past the bridge, if you're coming west, where you start up the hill, and there's a sharp right, and there's the one house there. That actually used to go all the way through, I believe, to the landfill area.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, next we have our FY '17 budget transfer requests. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you this evening is ten budget transfer requests that I've requested from the Board of Selectmen, and if the Board does support these, I'm on the agenda for the Finance Committee tomorrow evening, that where I'll present these to the Finance Committee. Some of these are to cover known over expenditures in fiscal '17, and I'm happy to go through those. I've tried to put a brief justification for each one of these. Police expenses for electricity, we're asking for an additional $10,000 for electricity. The electrical costs to run a new police department are more than anticipated. We have had the meter checked, we've done some homework with our architect, who confirmed that a building that size is used for that purpose will need the electricity that is currently being used at the police department. Their, so this additional $10,000 would address the, their electrical bills through the end of June of 2017. The budget for 2018, fiscal budget for 2018, has been addressed to reflect an increase in electricity.
Can I ask, would that change with the solar field coming online?
It will, a bit, and the fiscal '18 budget reflects savings from the solar field for nine months in every town and school electric account already, so that savings has already been incorporated into the fiscal '18 budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Legal expenses, we're asking, I'm asking the Board to consider transferring $18,000, and both of these are coming from unemployment insurance. We have a surplus on unemployment because we've had a, luckily or fortunately, we haven't had any real claims with our, significant claims with our unemployment at this point, so there are funds available. Legal expense, we've had some more than, greater than usual legal expenses during fiscal '17 on one particular piece of property and potential projects specifically, but these legal expenses hopefully will wind down in fiscal '18. There has been a small increase in the fiscal '18 legal budget, but we're spending three to $4,000 a month right now on legal bills, townwide, and would need some additional funds to fund that, fund that for the balance of the fiscal year. Our tax title property, the fiscal '17 budget had funds available for the tax title property and the tax collector's office. The collector has expended that $20,000. We're asking that we, the Board allow for an additional $5,000 to be transferred into that account to continue the, her efforts to collect past due taxes. Through March of 2017, we've collected in tax title payments just over $207,000, and I want to say through April, it was another $20,000 to $25,000. So, we've had very good success this year in trying to collect past due taxes, something that hasn't been done in the past, and something that the OR and our auditing firm has suggested occur. The tax collector's done a tremendous job at, at trying to collect those taxes, and this $5,000 would allow her to continue that through the end of the year.
Money well spent.
Yeah, it really has, but she's done a nice job. The Board allowed, for Town Manager Wages, the Board allowed me, as Town Manager, to cash in three weeks vacation. This would cover that cost. Technology expenses, I'm asking that the Board allow or authorize a transfer in the amount of $21,736 to fund a new phone system in this building and the library. The phone system we have here is over 20 years old, has very, very limited voicemail, has nowhere near the technological capabilities that any phone system now has, so it's caused problems. We have a variety of answering machines throughout the building. The inspection office probably is the worst example I can use, where we've got, you know, three or four people in that building and one, literally one answering machine you can go to Staples and buy to service the entire department, so they do the best they can at checking those voicemails, but, and leaving messages for people who the voicemail was for, if it wasn't for them, but it's really problematic. We're also having a tough time starting to, when we have to replace handsets and things of that nature, it's starting to get difficult. Oftentimes, we're buying reconditioned handsets because there aren't new ones being made anymore. This phone system would be connected to the existing phone system in the police department, so the brains of the, of the phone system would be in the police department. We would just add extensions for this building and for the library. The library, again, right now, and this is an extreme example, but when you call, if I call Manuel and have a question for him, the front desk will answer the phone, and they'll have to literally carry a portable phone up the stairs to Manuel's office and have him answer the phone. They have no voicemail, they have answering machines and whatnot, again, but, you know, it's, it's an old antiquated system that just, kind of doesn't work, and I think there's improvements that, obviously, in technology, allow us to be more efficient, more effective with a new phone system. Lastly, and again, this voice, this phone system would be a voiceover IP, so it'd be a fiber phone system that we have in place now. We would be able to reduce the number of copper lines that come into this building and save potentially $4,000 a year in doing that, so it'd help offset it. There's some question as to whether or not we can save the full $4,000, but there will be a savings of some kind moving from all the copper lines that we have to a voiceover IP system. And again, I think when the, when the police chief and the architect put together the police department, they chose a phone system, and we had discussions about the phone system they chose that would allow us to piggyback on that, so we aren't buying separate phone systems for different buildings, it's all one, the brains will be in one place. And as we move forward, if the fire department, Public Works Department potentially need a phone system, they could piggyback on that as well. Snow and ice, with, we received that extra $100,000 from DOR out of free cash. We spent that, and unfortunately, with the late snowstorms we had in, in March, we had to expend additional, just under $10,000, so what Al is looking for is $10,000 to be transferred into the snow and ice budget, and that will cover the overage that we have now. The Finance Committee Secretary, those funds will be transferred within the, within the Finance Committee budget. The Council on Aging Sewer is a transfer that will be taken care of within the Council on Aging budget itself. And Town Hall Custodial Salary, there was, there was a small mistake made in the fiscal '17 budget of $500 that will, that has been corrected in the fiscal '18 budget. So, at this point, these are the transfers we're requesting, there will be more coming, but they will probably, most of those will be staying within departments. So Public Works has, obviously has highway and has a road budget. There may be transfers between those two objects that will be coming in either May or June, but we were aware of these, of these overages, some of you, some of you have seen those in our, in the check runs, and we're just trying to get what we know addressed as quickly as we can. Happy to answer any questions anybody has on what we proposed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Keith, traditionally in the past, when we, when we've gotten a transfer request, it's had the account numbers on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're, so I've, in your packet, I believe, were the transfer forms?
Right, that's what I mean, the transfer forms had the actual account numbers.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry.
To and from.
No, I was unaware of that, I guess, and mistakenly left those off. I can certainly have those added and provide those to the Board, I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, I don't want to hold anything up, that's okay, but definitely please have those account numbers on there.
Sure.
Also, in the past, the form has the note about the 3% of the annual budget.
So with the Modernization Bill from the Commonwealth, that has been removed.
Okay, that cap of may not exceed 3%.
Right, that 3%, that 3% cap has been removed.
Okay, good, all right, and that was the Modernization Act, you said?
I'm sorry.
The Modernization Act took that out?
Yes, it did.
Okay, good, okay. Those are my only two questions, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If there are no further questions, I'd like to move that the transfers of accounts be okayed by this Board.
I believe we should do it singly.
I believe we have to do it each one, yes.
Okay, so I'll take one at a time, then. All righty. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we give the $10,000 to the police expense electricity line and take it from the unemployment insurance?
I'm going, okay.
I'm just going down one at a time.
The top two of these are just switched.
Oh, okay.
In relation to what's on his form.
Thank you.
I'm just going by this list.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the Board approve the budget transfer request for transferring from unemployment compensation to legal expenses in the amount of $18,000.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we transfer $5,000 from the unemployment insurance to the collector treasurer tax title.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the budget transfer request from unemployment compensation to Town Manager Wages for the amount of $8,569.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the Board transfer from the health insurance employer the amount of $21,736 to technology expenses for use for new phones.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the budget transfer request from health insurance employer to snow and ice in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move $450 from the health insurance employers to Town Hall Sewerage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the budget transfer request from health insurance employer to Town Hall Custodians' Salary in the amount of $500.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the Board transfer this summer $500 from the Finance Committee miscellaneous to the Finance Committee Secretary.
Can I, can I, can I ask the Board to amend that number from 500 to 429, which is, what's on this, I apologize.
I'm going off this page, 429, fine. I amend my motion to reflect that amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the budget transfer request from Council on Aging Director Wages to Council on Aging Sewer in the amount of $500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And Keith, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you know, there was a little budget problem here or there, you've made notes that for fiscal '18, moving forward, it's been addressed.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
I will get the account numbers out to the Board on these, so you have what they, so you know what they are, and in the future, we'll make sure those account numbers are on there.
Thank you.
Next, we have our special and annual town meeting motions. First, under the special town meeting, Finance Committee would be the number one.
It'll be them.
And then Article Two.
I'll take that.
Turning it over to the annual town meeting.
meeting is the, the board is, the board of selectmen are seeking to award the Boston Post Kane to Winston's most senior resident. We're hoping to have that individual there. Typically, that's a finance committee article to move, but I think in this case, it's probably a board of selectmen article to move.
Okay. Here's my question. I, I, if I remember correctly, and if I didn't miss under, miss here, I believe the finance committee did not have an annual report this year.
For the special. They're doing one for the annual.
Yes.
They're doing one for the annual, but not this.
No, they're doing one for the special.
No.
Special town meeting, article one, committee, I move the town board to here and act on the report of the finance committee.
And they passed over. Look at their recommendations they passed over.
Oh, so I need to, I need to be looking at both of these. Okay.
Good catch, Austin. So they are doing it on the regular, but not on the special.
Right.
So, okay. Were there any other articles like this that, that was?
No, the only, the only, the only item for this article is, is the Boston Post Kane.
So, okay, article one, finance committee also passed over, but we have.
Both articles, both articles ones.
Here's my question before we go further, because as my understanding, that school committee would like to issue their report.
And I believe they're doing that at the same time, at the beginning of the, the annual town meeting, not the special town meeting, is my understanding.
So for article one, instead of the finance committee, would the, the school committee be issuing a report, or no?
I, I don't think they're, I don't think that they're issuing a report as part of the special town meeting. I think they're issuing a report as part of the annual town meeting, which will be article one of the annual town meeting.
But that's what I'm on, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So article one, annual.
Still stuck on the special town meeting.
Well, I, the only concern I have.
Boston Post Kane article.
Well, if you're going to do Boston Post Kane in the special town meeting, I know the warrant that we've signed.
It's on number one, the regular.
It's on number one, regular. You're confused too, yeah.
No, no, I'm not at all. I, I'm worried that Keith's this.
Maybe I'm.
It's on the regular town meeting, the article.
This is the regular.
Number one, the regular.
According to this.
It's on the regular one, too.
Yeah.
On this, on this one.
I'm sorry. I was wrong. The reg, the special town meeting, it's the regular town meeting. I apologize.
Okay, no, no problem.
Yeah, we did, we just trying to be clear. So.
I'm not helping you.
I, I just want to be perfectly clear before we go to meeting. So would we award the Boston Post Kane and then defer to the school committee? Because I know they want to issue a report as well.
The finance committee's got a report, the school committee's got a report. So I think we issue the, we, we award the Boston Post Kane at the beginning of the meeting and then allow whatever committees want to make a report after that to make a report.
Okay.
Does that work?
That works. I just, I, I want to know.
I apologize for my, for my confusion.
No, it's fine. So it's annual, yep. So in the special, one is going to be?
Passed over.
Passed over. Two is going to be Mike.
So we're out of that one. We're into the regular one now.
Right.
So.
So article one of the annual.
So they're going to pass over, and we're going to do the board, the Boston Post Kane, and then they're going to go do their finance report, and then the school committee's going to report. Okay. So we're all, we're all going.
And any other committees that are required?
Yeah, any other committees that wish to speak at that point.
So I would do the Boston Post Kane?
Yep.
I would say yes.
And then defer.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm a little clearer. Article two. The town vote to take no action on article two.
I'll take article two.
So that should come from the school committee.
You think that's going to come from school committee?
Should. It's your article.
Yep.
Okay.
How about I'll be backup in the event that?
Okay.
I think that's a.
And I'll put Mike in parentheses.
I think that's a selectman's article, isn't it? Isn't it?
It, it's a selectman's article, because it's coming out of the general budget, but would the school want to address that?
I'm sure they can speak to it.
I believe that fall town meeting, at the fall special town meeting?
Didn't Mike say it?
Um, yes, but then the school committee elaborated on it.
Right, but we have to make the motion.
So I'll make the motion, and they can, we can defer to them for any statements.
Okay.
Okay, so it's going to be Mike.
Article four, revolving accounts. Amy?
You know, I'm going to try, but I can't guarantee that I'm going to be there. So I don't want any articles.
Okay.
That is the fifteenth.
Oh, that's your date.
So that's a big date for me. So I don't know. I'm going to try.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Article six, the community action committee article. I will do it. It's a good. It's a big one. It's a good one, though. Important. Article seven.
I'll do that one.
You sure?
Oh, sure.
I was going to take it.
Okay, how about you? That's fine.
So who's that, Barbara? Okay.
I'm good with it. Article eight.
I'll take that one. How's that? I'll trade you.
I'm thinking my quote is up.
Can I?
Can you?
No.
I'll take it.
This is fire department?
Austin can do it.
Okay.
Right, okay. He gets to ride in it, though. Oh, my.
I'll take article 10.
Oh, okay. Ooh, that's a big one. Good for you, Audrey. Take one for the teen.
After reading those public hearing notices for the joint, joint owned poll and stuff like that, I can handle an article.
Sure.
Article 11.
Operating budget.
That should be you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good at assigning them.
There we go. Thanks.
I'll just go right through and sign them all.
Mostly that's going to be deferred to.
That's, that's going to go through the line by line. It'll take, it'll take some while anyway.
Put a call out if you want to hold.
It doesn't, though, Mr. Warren does that. He calls them up.
Yeah, goes through the line items, keeps us holding.
Article 12 is water.
I'll take that.
I'll take it.
Article 14, transfer station. That's got been written all over it, Austin.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's supposed to be, I'll take it, but, oh, man.
Transfer station kind of guy. School committee. I used a transfer station, so I'd, I would have taken it.
It's like the elite club.
Yeah, it's a fun time down there.
It is.
I just go do what I need to do.
Okay, article 15 is school committee?
Sixteen.
Article 16 is school committee? Article 17 is school committee. Bless you.
Bless you. Thank you very much. Okay, okay, wait a minute. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, school committee, all right.
Eighteen, actually, Austin.
Can I do it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do what you can.
Please.
Article 19.
Yeah, I'll take that, I guess.
Uh, Mike, did you say you're taking that one?
Yeah, I'll take that one.
I'm sorry, okay. So 19 is Mike.
Twenty is zoning planning board.
I'll take that one.
Nope, planning board.
Oh, duh. Yep.
So you're going to do that one?
Yeah.
Guy. Twenty-one is planning.
And the petitioners are doing the nonbinding.
Typically, the planning board don't present articles, do they?
I believe Guy Carper Sero does.
Yeah, he does his own articles.
He's done in the past, okay.
I, I, I thought he, I thought he spoke to them, but I don't remember.
Right, he always speaks to them.
Make him. I believe they do.
Present the article? Okay.
You sit down at that table down there, and that's when they speak up.
Yeah, just, because I'm not sure if the board needs to present it and then, yeah.
Should we have a backup order just in case?
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll do the two. I'll take, I'll ta, I'll do the two, planning board, which is 20 and 21 if needed.
And then the last one is by the petitioners, the nonbinding referendum.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that speak to that, correct?
Who are they? Exactly, how they do you know?
There's a group, I believe.
It had enough signatures to, to be put on the warrant.
Do they, are they aware that they need to come up and, and address that?
We'll, we'll remind them.
Okay, good for you.
They're going to explain it, because I'm looking at that. I have no idea what that means. Is it, is this one you're talking about? Oh, this, oh, the one with the trump one. They have people that are going to come up and speak. That's going to be a good one.
There's big news today. I'll talk about it later.
Oh, my goodness.
Did we watch bombs today?
No, I didn't know.
Did we watch bombs today?
No.
Oh, yeah, that's big.
It's big.
Is it?
I was busy watching the scene.
Oh, boy.
All right.
Okay.
I was doing a tax management.
So there's, there's one other item under that.
Discuss the special election date.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So working with, working with the town clerk and hearing some concerns about having the special election, if it does occur, if one of the proposition two and a half articles were to pass, a special election has to occur. I've heard, I heard some complaints about it in the past. It was done in July after kids, after kids had finished up school and a lot of people were out of town on vacation and whatnot. So I worked with the town clerk. We have, the board of selectmen has to notify her that the special town meeting is required, and she is by statute allowed 35 days to prepare for that election. So if the board, as they normally do, opens up a, a regular board meeting, we've got a schedule like normal, like normal at 6:20 next Monday evening, you will, you will leave that board meeting open.
Resess it.
Resess it, excuse me, thank you. And if during the town meeting, one of the two warrant articles are approved for proposition two and a half override, the board would go into, back into the public, reconvene to public meeting after the town meeting. And it's, it's, the earliest you can have the special election is Tuesday, June 20th, which is two days before the end of school. I'd suggest you don't, you, you not do it on the 21st, because I think a lot of kids and parents are going to be busy trying to get themselves organized for the last day of school. So my suggestion would be that the board hold the special election on Tuesday, June 20th. And the hours are typically, it's typically been a four hour block. My suggestion for the four hour, four hour block would be 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM to allow people who are working to, to, to come in and vote after work if they wanted to do that. The absentee ballots are, will be available. So if the three to seven timeframe doesn't work, they can fill out an absentee ballot. I, if the board want, if the board wants to open up for a couple more hours, I think it'd be okay. Opening from eight to eight, I think, would be.
Too long.
Way too long. And I think you're going to have the town clerk coming in at some point in the future, talking about, looking to modify the hours that the polls are open anyways, because again, we were open for 12 hours. Last, last week, we had 300 some odd people show up. So, you know, we want to be open for, for, for the people when they can make it, but there's going to be a balancing act there. So again, we're suggesting that four hour block be three to seven on, on the 20th, 20th of June.
I think I like it a little more than four hours, though. I feel like I, every time I've had to go vote for an override or, or anything, I have, personally, I resent that it's on Saturday. I resent that it's like eight to 12, because that's just such a specific time period. I would rather see it extended a little bit.
Sure.
Give people the opportunity to get in there. Not everybody remembers to go get the absentee ballot.
Sure.
What does anybody else think?
It's June 20th, it's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, huh.
Yeah, I'd like a longer time, maybe 11 to 7.
Or even noon to 7.
Or noon to 7.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's better.
Noon, noon sounds good to me, yep.
From 12 to 7. I'm good with that. Yeah, the Saturday thing in July really is awful. Can't get enough people to show up, because everybody's out of town. You plan your vacations, you, you know.
Right.
Very hard to get people back. And Saturdays, you're running the kids from ballpark to ballpark and, you know, unless you're sitting at the seniors, at the park, at the field there, you're catching it. So I, I'm, I'm good with 12 to 12 to 7.
Right, and my Saturdays are fully, whatever I gotta do. It's just, it never works out.
Do we need a motion to make it 12 to 7 if that happens?
When you, so this is, this is for, just for discussion tonight. There's nothing that needs to be done tentatively. This is just to, to have a conversation. So when you have that meeting, if you have that meeting after town meeting next Monday night, we've had this discussion already, and it'll just be a formality. So there's no real vote needed tonight. You'll have that, you'll take that vote if needed next Monday night.
Can I ask roughly, how much does it cost the town to have a special election like that?
I'd have to get back to you with an exact, with a, with a, with a decent number. I, I'll check with Judy. I want to say it's at least a couple thousand dollars, because we've got a program, the, the voting machines. Obviously, we've got to buy the ballots and, and staff time to, to be there. So I want to say it's between $2,000 and $3,000 on, on a day like that where it's only seven hours and we won't need a tremendous amount of ballots. But I'll find out for sure.
You'd be amazed. They didn't come out for the regular election, but they'll be out for that override.
Oh, yeah. No, but we won't need anything, anywhere near the presidential election, for example, as far as where ballots goes. We'll probably order a thousand, at least.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and closed in our packet are the meeting minutes from Wednesday, April 19.
You missed the town manager report.
Oh, I skipped right over you.
I never sounded better. I never sounded better. Just to, so much stuff here. As far as the project updates go, we've got, we've, we're, Public Works is moving forward with the, with the hydro flushing. Got just over a third of those done already. We found some hydrants with problems, so we'll be replacing those hydrants sometime in the near future. There was a comment made that I became aware of, and it's something I really haven't talked too much about, and it's probably my fault in doing that, but the streetlight upgrade project that is being proposed next week at town meeting, there was a comment I saw questioning why not, why are we not using some type of grant monies towards the, the cost of doing that? And there could be grant monies available to us. The, the challenge we have is we can't apply for any grants until we own the actual assets, the streetlights. So I, I have had conversations with the Metropolitan Plan, Area Planning Commission Council, who is responsible for awarding grants for the Commonwealth. I have filled out the paperwork that's needed to reserve funding, and depending on how next Monday night goes, we'll file a formal application with that organization and expect to have a portion of those costs funded through grants. And, but in case we don't, we're asking for the entire amount. But they seem pretty confident that we will, we will, we will receive some grant money for that. So the amount of money we end up having to, to finance will be less than, than what's been proposed. And we'll try to, if the board will allow next Monday night, I'm happy to expand upon that during the town meeting.
Do we own the polls now?
We have, we will own the light fixtures Monday, after Monday night's vote.
Not the polls.
The polls.
Yeah, that's what I meant. That's what I meant.
So, High Street Bridge is almost underway. We're going to start that, that work in the next month or so. And again, that work will be done by Labor Day, which is great news.
That's amazing.
We've, we've had, we've finally had some conversations, a brief conversation with Uh, we've, we've had, we've finally had some conversations, a brief conversation with the IGA owner. He has, um, listed that, listed that, that site, uh, with a Realtor and has, has had some conversations with some, um, known grocery stores. Uh, I think what he's hoping for is a, an established grocery store chain, uh, will be interested in that and they can, they can, uh, agree to terms on leasing that piece of property. He has had some, some calls from other individuals, um, who may not be a, a known grocery store entity and I think he's looking to, um, enter into a lease with somebody who knows the process, the, the process and knows the grocery store business and, and is probably candidly a lesser risk than somebody who's trying to, uh, open up a store for the, uh, for the first time. Last week at the, um, at the Board of Selectment meeting, two weeks ago at the Board of Selectment meeting, we had a, a resident come, come in who was not happy with the, um, type of response that the police department had provided him over the years. I met with, excuse me, that individual the following morning and, um, took his information and, um, spoke to the police department, Chief Walsh, uh, spent some time, um, developing a, a response and, and providing me information, uh, with some of the complaints and concerns that individual had raised. Uh, what I can tell you is, and I, I've copied, I've included a copy of the letter in the board's packet, uh, to that individual. Uh, so from two thousand and one to date, there have been two hundred and sixty-three requests for service, for services from, in that property. A hundred and eighty-three reports were taken and in the past five years alone, the, the police department has responded to a hundred and forty-one requests for services. Uh, they've arrested thirty individuals, um, excuse me, including seventeen juveniles. One of the frustrations that the, uh, property owner or caretaker of that property had was he wasn't providing information. The information is, is, it can't be provided on, on juveniles. Uh, they, the, 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 the court will determine whether or not they would like to have, uh, people come in and speak to the court about the issue. Um, I believe Mr. Holmes was concerned about the fact he hadn't been contacted to actually speak at, at court. That responsibility lies with the court, if they feel like they wanna have somebody come in and speak, they'll, they'll contact you, not the police department. So I think that that concern was, 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 was misplaced with regards to the police department. Charges, it, it was also an allegation made that, that the police department decided not to prosecute, um, underage kids, because it was gonna ruin their life or the record. Um, that decision, they, they, the, the kids were arrested, they were brought to juvenile court and the judge made a decision, um, based on the evidence provided to him, on whether or not there should be, uh, you know, formal charges filed and, and convictions made, not the, not the Winston Police Department. So how that was handled in court, um, is again solely the, the decision of, of the judge in that particular case, had nothing to do with the police department. Uh, they were arrested, there were, there were summonses given to them and, uh, they were, uh, brought to trial and brought to court. And from that point forward, the police department doesn't have any ability to determine what the, uh, the results are going to be. There was some concerns about, uh, the, 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 the property caretaker, caretaker had given, uh, a license plate to the police department and they couldn't find them. That is not completely true, the property owner saw several youths leaving the, the unsecured building. The plate came back to a vehicle owned by a female who was not a resident, resident of Winston. The police department reached out, uh, to the individual after obtaining a phone number, left several messages. That person did not return the phone calls. Again, the, the police department cannot compel somebody to return a phone call. If they choose to refuse that, they certainly have the legal right to do that. I guess, again, one, one extreme example of how the police department went over and above, was a situation where, um, it was recommended that, that the individual put the field cameras up, so if there was motion on the property and nobody was there, there would be video taken. Uh, the individual, uh, didn't have a computer, um, was gonna have a tough time acquiring those cameras. Uh, the, one of the police officers of the, used his own account and his own funds to purchase three, uh, I'm sorry, two field cameras, uh, for, uh, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes did, did reimburse the individual for those field cameras, but the police department, in my humble opinion, went over and above and, and, uh, purchased those for Mr. Holmes. They were, they have been utilized and they have been helpful at times. The biggest challenge the police department has is the building's unsecured.
Right.
Anybody can wa- you know, and there are, there are windows, there are doors that people can walk into. One of the frustrations that
What kind of building is it? Is it a commercial?
It's a former, where, it's, there's a number of buildings on the property, they're former, they're former warehouses.
If you're last to pre-sit property?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the challenge the police department has, and I think it's a fair challenge, is, uh, with as much access as people have to that building, uh, taking fingerprints, um, to determine who may have been in that property, is a real challenge, because those fingerprints could be dozens of people. If the property was secured, uh, and people couldn't get in, then obviously taking fingerprints makes more sense. They, they can focus on, you know, a, a small number of people that have been potentially broken into the property. But right now, I think we could all walk up there right now and find the window or door we could walk in and have our fingerprints all over the place and not touch anything. Now, we've trespassed
Right.
but we haven't stolen anything, so.
In all honesty, that was the building that we started our abandoned and distressed properties policy.
Yeah, I thought so, you know what, someone goes in there and they get hurt, you know, this guy, he's gonna, you know, if it's unsecured, kids make poor decisions.
It, this is, this is a bad thing for teenagers.
It is, I mean, it's a challenge and people know about it and they wanna go up and have fun.
Yeah.
And it's dangerous.
And there's dares.
There is.
Yeah, but, why isn't it secured? I mean, why isn't it secured?
His, I, I believe, he, he's, I think he's, he's shared here and, and with me, um, in my office that, you know, he wants to secure the building, but people go in, they break the windows, they break the doors and, and
The wind is breaking the windows.
I
There's only so much the police department can do.
I think there's gonna be, I think there's gonna be a disagreement on, on how that's happening. Are vandals breaking windows? Absolutely. Uh, I'm sure they probably are. But again, they, I think, as quick as they're broken, they need to be repaired. Um, so it's not as enticing to continue to break them and, um, I think that, my opinion is the police department has done everything they possibly can to address the calls for service up there and they've responded to him in the same manner they would respond to anybody else who has a call for service into the police department and have done everything that they possibly can do to, um, investigate the different instances that have occurred up there to try to resolve the problem. In some cases, they've, 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 they have have, but they're unable to do that. In many cases, they haven't, because of the condition of the building and the state of the building.
Can I ask you one more thing? Theoretically, if I were to, um, call the police
Mm-hmm.
and they had to come to a, a report on something that I had called on, I could go down at any point and ask them the status or make an appointment with the chief to find out the status of whatever it is I had reported on.
Absolutely.
And, and you, you know, knowing the chief like I do, I, I'm sure he would be happy to comply.
Yeah, and I guess lastly, I would just, um, I would just let the board know that the, that the fire department is starting to go out and, and mark, um, unsafe buildings. This building is on that list, uh, unfortunately, and if there is, uh, an event inside that building, uh, where the police are called, they'll take the information, um, but they will not be going in that building because of the condition of the building.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
We don't want that leaving her.
No.
If we haven't already notified the property owner, we'll be doing that in, in the very near future, along with many other buildings, for, you know, resident and response, for safety respond, emergency response purposes.
Um, Madam Chair, to the, to the town manager, in the event that, uh, obviously the building is in distress, um, and it's really not usable, it, it then becomes we can have the building inspected, condemn it, and then they have to fence it off under the rules that we've passed. Is that an option for this particular piece of property, given the fact that, um, they don't seem to care about, you know, I'm afraid that walkway's gonna come down on somebody when they're driving.
So is my husband.
Yeah. I'll have that conversation tomorrow with the building, the building commissioner and make sure that if there's anything we can do to proactively secure that building, so it's not a safety ha- safety hazard for people who are using the area, you know, the roadways and walking and things of that nature, that nobody gets hurt, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you.
The transfer station, it will begin op- being open on Thursday nights again at seven o'clock, uh, June first. So people who wanna go in the evening, uh, there's your opportunity to do so. Uh, the street sweeping is going well, it's about, um, halfway done. Uh, the Harris Road Bridge is moving along on schedule, the beams are in, uh, the forms have been poured and, uh, and that's moving forward. The ru- the, the work on Route one forty is starting on the fifteenth of May. Uh, the, the state has been generous enough to allow, at, at Al's request, to, uh, allow the town to take the millings, uh, from the old asphalt that we can use in, um, town, on the town roadways, so we're thrilled, uh, to, uh, to take that. Um, if the board calls, last year, the town received a, a grant for, for transfer station expenses, I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, so they, the decision was made to order four hundred and forty kitchen compost buckets, and a new sign for the transfer station. Uh, the, when the residents come in to buy their new transfer station sticker in June for the next fiscal year, the first four hundred and forty, get a tran- get a, uh,
Excited, I'll be there.
A kitchen compost bucket.
You're a stat compost?
So that's, that's exciting.
I always compost.
I do too.
Not on my kitchen counter, but that's just me. I, I don't know.
Well, that just means for kitchen waste, I wouldn't put it on the kitchen counter, right?
I don't know.
There's eggshells in your greens and stuff.
Yeah, but you don't put it on your counter.
I guess not.
It depends on how pretty it is, you know?
Uh, yeah, no.
It'll smell pretty quickly.
No, I take it out of the compost pile every day.
It's a small little bucket, so it's like
Oh, is it really?
Uh, we, we have a barrel, compost barrel out back, so we collect it, then we
Maybe it's just not, maybe, maybe it's just me.
I'll be honest today.
With all the, uh, all the rain we've had, uh, Lake Ben Ammonak is full and
Good.
and the drought has been lifted, which is nice.
Nice.
Public Works, you'll see out, with weather permitting, they've been, they've been doing some roads, uh, putting some new asphalt down, um, on some roads in town. They, they've been delayed a bit, uh, because of the wet weather, we've gotta put it down when it's dry and last week or so has not been real dry. The water tank rehabilitation will be starting in the near future as well, the water needs to stay over fifty degrees and, and again, with this rain, it's been kinda chilly, so that's, that's been a challenge. We also, um, Al hired a company using his Chapter ninety money called, and the company's name is Street Scan. What they've done is they've gone across, they've gone around town on every road and what they've done is they've, uh, graded the road based on a number of conditions, ideally to determine, is it in great shape, is it in poor shape, what type of work needs to be done, how much traffic is, is on those roads, that type of thing. And what that's gonna do for Al and the town is to say, for example, we get about two hundred and forty thousand dollars in Chapter ninety money and we wanna do, um, we wanna just pave roads, for example. We plug the, the, the traits that we want to have the software consider into the software and it'll provide to Al or whoever's using the software, a recommended list of roads. That, 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 that two hundred and forty thousand dollars, in the computer's opinion, uh, can be best used on. Now, that list will be manipulated a bit, because, um, you know, there may be a couple of roads near each other, one to be done this year, one to be done next year, but it'll be, save us a bit of money to do them both in the same year. So it might be changed a bit, but I, I think what's important in our mind is, it's not a political decision anymore. We can certainly bring the, bring the decision to the, to the Board of Selectment and say, here's our recommended list of roads, which Al's going to do, but there's gonna be a basis, um, a more concrete basis for that list than there has been in the past. So that work is, is nearly done, Al's been chomping at the bit very candidly, because he wants to go out the bid for his paving work. The board will probably see that sometime in either, either your next meeting or, or a meeting in June.
Good, yeah.
Um, the, the, the water treatment plant, if, if I haven't told the board, um, did have some major damage the last power surge on March second. Uh, was it, it's an insurance claim, um, and we've been addressing that through our insurance company, so the, the, the insurance company will be paying for, uh, the bulk gift on all the damage less the deductible that we have. The Roast Road Bridge will go out to bid in Au- in August with the plan of having a temporary bridge in there before snow flies. And a section of Route twelve from Mill Street to the New Hampshire Line is also going up to bid for, uh, for paving work. Public Works Parks Department is working very hard and, and, and once, uh, the next couple of weeks, we'll be moving all of their manpower very candidly for the week before Memorial Day to clean the, clean the cemeteries up, to make sure that the cemeteries are as pristine as they can be to, um, reflect the sacrifices that those in the cemetery have made, um, for our country. So, so we're, we're pleased to be doing that, um, later on in May. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Uh, Madam Chair, to Keith, um, the cannon, in, in the, in the park across the street here, one of the cannons has been raised.
Yes.
And, what's going on there?
They're fixing the wheels.
Fixing the wheels?
I thought it was a new cannon. I, I wasn't, I, I would, uh, so I had to ask somebody what was happening.
Okay.
Who put the new cannon in? And it wasn't a new cannon, it's just that they're, they're fixing the, uh, the wheels to the cannon.
Okay.
Yep.
They did the other one last year.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember when they did that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sure that will be done before Memorial Day as well. I, I don't know that for a fact, but I, I can't believe that they wouldn't be.
I would imagine, yeah. Okay. Thank you, very thorough.
Um, I think my only question is, have you heard anything on the state budget?
Nothing more than, than what's been discussed and released in the, on the House budget. The Senate budget, I've heard nothing on.
No.
I, I will tell you that I, I have heard that revenues, they had hoped revenues would pick up and they haven't. Uh, how that, how that affects the fiscal eighteen budget, candidly, I'm not sure at this point, nobody's really said. But the hope was that some of the state revenues would come in towards the end of the year. At a bit higher rate than, than, um, what they had been and at least through the end of April, they haven't.
Right.
So I don't know what that means, uh, on the spending side. Yeah, so, um, as soon as we hear, we'll certainly let the board know, but I've heard nothing on how that's progressing.
It's funny, 'cause I heard it was down, then it was up.
Well, there are some serious problems that the Department of Revenue has fire is applying payments and hundreds of people are getting notices for payments that they have mailed in that weren't applied and notices have gone out. They have a whole new system this year that they're using to apply those payments from the income tax and, um, they're having a really difficult time with it.
So they haven't applied them properly, is that what you're gonna say?
Not sure.
Okay.
They're trying to determine that. Yeah, I have like about seventy clients that receive notices, all in the same day.
Oh, wow.
They were all mailed in.
So they're all, oops, we lost your check.
They're lucky, I'm working with a taxpayer advocate.
Oh, boy.
So, and other firms have said the same thing.
True.
They're receiving like forty and fifty notices a day, so.
Go ahead for electric.
So that's just though, that's just the income tax, obviously they have other revenues. But, yeah.
That's not
Yeah, no, no. So, I'm sure those numbers will be adjusted, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you, I hope so.
That's a big month for them.
Yeah, really.
They don't know what's going out, they don't know what's coming in.
Yeah, yeah, so, anyway.
Okay.
Moving on.
Before us, we have our minutes, we have the minutes from Wednesday, April nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, the joint, special joint meeting with the school committee.
Make a motion that, uh, accept it as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a second.
Austin, second, yeah.
Okay, let's go back to all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
It was aye.
Seems dark in here.
Okay, and, the executive session minutes for approval only this evening, not for release.
Make a motion that be approved and held at this time?
And let's put a date on it, please, the executive session minutes of Monday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Yep.
You second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Chair, what's that? Agenda items, we have selectmen meeting, meeting dates for May, May fifteenth, prior to the standard, uh, special town meeting and annual town meeting, to be held at MMHS at six-twenty. And then we have May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, a regular meeting. And we are still discussing joint meeting dates for the tri board, correct?
June first does not work for the moderator, so it, we won't have a meeting, a tri, or we won't have a meeting with the school committee on June first to discuss, to discuss the Montech rep, because the moderator is unable to attend.
Mm-hmm. Can we do it shortly? Can we do it shortly thereafter? What's the next available date?
I think it's June 12th, if I'm not mistaken. We've got to work that out with the school committee and
Is it school committees turn to host?
The school committees turn to host and we certainly don't want to take that away from them, so, so we'll try to find a date that works best for everybody.
When does the existing appointment end? June 30th?
30th.
That's true, but you have to have it done by a certain time in June 14th. Is the absolute latest.
Okay.
It's so many days after town meeting.
Okay.
Have there been a lot of people who have applied?
There's been a lot of talk about applying, but only one, only one person submitted a letter of interest.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you. So June 12th is the absolute latest.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah. Madam Chair, one question, if I might.
Oh, please do.
I received a letter from Linda about the capital planning committee, if I was interested in doing that again, and yes, I am, so if it's okay with this committee, it'll be one less thing you have to
Are we, are we going to go over the whole list of them at a later point? Let's do that at a later point.
Okay, just want, you know, no, I'm interested.
Okay.
Versus sending back the letter.
But thank you for letting me know because I was going to ask you that.
Yes. Madam Chair.
Do you want me to do it?
Oh, sorry.
No. I, okay, no, we're good.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that the board enter into executive session under exemption number two to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, subject town accountant.
Yay, is there a second?
Second.
A real call vote is needed. Mr. Seganowitz, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye. And the chair votes aye.
Yes, we